Good evening, this is an in-person meeting, special meeting of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Today is Monday, August 4th, the time is 6:31. I'm Jennifer Perez, Chair of the Board. In attendance, we have in-person, we have Josephine Kalavich, Maritza Estamira Vélez, Andre Woodson, Alvin Benahan. Online, we have Akeisha Casimir. We also have Willie Medina and Rob Traver person. To start, we have, we don't have anybody signed up for public speaking, so we're going to move on to a presentation by Clifton Larson and Alan, LOP of the Fertense Clotting. I'm going to turn it over. I can share.
And I do not have the ability to share my screen.
Well, give it to you now.
Okay.
You should have access now, there you go.
Okay. All right, so can you all see the, the presentation here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so by way of introduction, my name is Emily Deveraux, I'm a Signing Director at CLA. I am work primarily in the state and local government, that's my industry specialization. I'm in our forensics, litigation and investigations area. I've been doing this for 23 years. Been with CLA or a predecessor version of CLA for 23 years, performing these types of forensic accounting engagements. Working with me and, and here with me on this presentation is Leah Wyatt. And I'll let Leah introduce herself.
Good evening, my name is Leah Wyatt. I am a Director in the Forensics Practice in CLA. I've been with CLA for about five years. I am a Licensed Attorney, a Licensed Private Investigator, and a Certified Fraud Examiner.
Okay. So if you can see my screen here, we will go through the scope of the purpose. So the, the scope of our engagement, we were engaged by the Connecticut State Department of Education to conduct a forensic audit of the Bridgeport Public Schools. And it was for the fiscal years 24 and 25. When we did our initial meetings with, with CDSE, when we were first engaged, our focus was on operational budget expenditures, fiscal controls, and looking at and identifying any misalignments between what was budgeted and the actual spending in those categories, to see if there was any misalignment there. And looking at the budgeted to actual expenditures, to see what was actually budgeted for these fiscal years and what was expended for those fiscal years. Like I said, our focus was on the operational budget expenditures. And it was, it was to assess whether those expenditures aligned with budget allocations by category and where they didn't, to identify the basis for such misalignment to the extent that we could. And then we also looked at the fiscal controls. We looked at the effectiveness and the existence of, of the existing internal controls that were in place specifically surrounding the budgeting process. And the evaluation of actual to budget expenditures. And so we looked at these controls and, and determined whether these controls or how these controls may have impacted the budget to expenditure analysis that we were performing. Our focus was not a financial statement audit. We were not hired to do a financial statement audit, a compilation or a review under AICPA standards. And so we did not express any opinions on the financial elements, the financial accounts, or any of those financial items. That would be something that would be done as part of a financial statement audit in accordance with the AICPA, which is not what we, what we did. We did not perform a full budget to actual analysis for the special revenue fund. Our focus was on the general fund and general fund expenditures. While we did look at the special revenue fund, we looked at it for trends, we did not do a detailed budget to actual analysis on the special revenue fund, it was only on the operation, the general fund. So the way that we performed our work, we had an initial conference, initial kickoff meeting with the state and state officials to establish what was going to be our focus, what was going to be our scope, who are our main points of communication, and what would be the status or the cadence of our communication or our update meetings with them. After we had this kickoff meeting and discussed some of the concerns and some of the questions that they wanted us to address and some of the things that they wanted us to look into, we then created a document request list that we then submitted. That document request list included financial data, documents, supporting documents, contracts, a list of individuals that we could interview and that we could speak with. We obtained policies and procedures and, and various documentation that, that we then used to focus some of our analysis and some of our review that we'll get into here in a bit. So the first step was we conducted interviews. And we conducted interviews with key personnel in multiple different areas. We conducted interviews with individuals from the finance, from facilities and maintenance, from just various different areas. We actually interviewed 10 different individuals as part of this process. And the reason for those interviews was, we had obtained and reviewed the policies and procedures. And so we knew what the expectations were. And we knew what was required per the policy and procedure. And so we interviewed these individuals to gain an understanding of how they performed their day-to-day duties and the things that they did, to see if their performance of their duties was in alignment with the established policies and procedures. And really to understand what were the financial processes that were, that were being followed by these individuals in their respective duties. So when we looked at the policies and procedures and the processes and procedures, we focused primarily on the budgeting, procurements, grants, facilities, operations, and financial reporting practices. And so those were the areas that we reviewed as far as the policies and procedures were concerned. And then in our, our interviews with, with specific individuals. We gained access to Munis, we got read-only access to Munis, so that we could extract and analyze the financial data. And we could pull the data that we needed in order to be able to perform this analysis that we were performing. And as, as part of pulling that Munis access, we, we had a couple of different meetings with and interviews with people in the Finance Department, who helped us understand what data we needed to pull, how we needed to pull it, and what codes we needed to include and what we needed to analyze. And then we confirmed what the information that they gave us with the data that we actually pulled, to make sure that what they gave us made sense. And if it didn't, then we went back with questions and, and got clarification on that. Once we had the data pulled down and we did some, did some analytics on that. Now, what is that? Data analytics involves looking at, looking for anomalies, looking for trends, looking for things that don't seem to make sense when you're looking at, at the whole picture, right? When you're looking at, at 24 to 25, all of the financial data for two fiscal years, as you can imagine, there's a lot of data. And there's a lot of transactions, and there's a lot of things that happen. And so we, we can't perform with the limited time and the limited budget. You can't look at literally every single transaction for two full fiscal years. And so the data analytics section of, of our work involves trend analysis and anomalies and risk-based assessments of the transactions to determine what we need to test. And then from that analytics, we selected 60 high-risk transactions to test for their legitimacy and their proper classification. And what do I mean by that? We wanted to look for, were these purchases, were these transactions for legitimate district purposes? Did they appear to be something that was for school-related, district-related purposes? And were they properly classified? Meaning if it was a payroll expenditure, was it classified as a payroll expenditure in the accounting system? And, and so the 60 transactions, 60 high-risk transactions that we looked at, that was what we were looking for. As well as, did it have all the supporting documentation with it? If it was a purchase, did it have the contract? Did that contract file follow the procurement policies? Did it have the appropriate sign-offs and approvals? Was it recorded in, in the accounting system for the correct amount? If the invoice said $1,000, was it recorded for $1,000, right? And so those were all of the, the types of things that we looked for in these 60 transactions. We also got access to the former CFO's email account. And we performed a targeted search of over 97,000 emails, specifically looking for things related to budget or procurement practices or anything that may have come to our attention during the data analytics, the data review, the interviews that we had performed. Any information that was given to us, we would perform a targeted search using keywords on these 97,000 emails to identify if there was any communication regarding that, that data and those documents and those procedures. We were also provided with board, board minutes for the last two fiscal years. And so we reviewed those board meeting minutes to identify what, what was taking place in these board, board meetings? What type of information were you all provided with? What type of information did you have available to you to review? What type of information was, or what information or what topics were discussed in these board minutes? And was that relevant to, or related to, I guess, the budgeting process, budgeting expenditures, any kind of shortfalls or any of that information? And so we reviewed the, the meeting minutes for those purposes as well. And then we performed a year-over-year budget analysis. So we looked at both the original budget, the revised budget, and then the actual budgets for the, both the general and special revenue funds. And we looked at them year-over-year, like I said, by category. And we looked for any, any large swings in budgeted amounts, what was budgeted and what was approved for each category, year-over-year. We did 23 to 24 and 24 to 25, to see if there were any large either jumps or decreases, I guess, in specific categories. And then we looked to see, did that make sense, right? So if payroll increased, if the budgeted, approved budget amount for payroll, say, increased from 24 to 25 significantly, we then verified that with student enrollment. And we looked and said, okay, did student enrollment also increase? And we looked at those types of things and performed that type of analysis for year-over-year to see if the swings in these various different categories made sense. Where they did not, that also fed into our selection of the 60 risk-based transactions to sample. We also looked at the employee listings to see if there were any duplicate employees in there. You know, one employee that was in the system multiple times, receiving pay, multiple paychecks, that type of thing. We looked to see if there were potentially ghost, ghost employees in the system that were receiving payments, even though they weren't employees and that type of thing. And based on that review, we didn't find any, any ghost or duplicate employees in the system. So the key findings. There was no evidence of fraud or misappropriation that we found. But we did find that there were misclassifications of transactions. And it appeared that those misclassifications were manipulating the budget to make it appear that certain expenditures were falling within the budgeted amounts. And it did appear that this was, this was often performed without board oversight. Was it because it wasn't presented to you? Was it because it was presented to you? That's what we had to go in and, and look at and find, right? And what we found with these, with these budget misclassifications and misalignments was that, that in the system, in the accounting system, there were often transfers, moving money from one account to another account, right? And it appeared that they were being moved from one account to another account because one account in a specific budget category was being overspent. Therefore, those expenses were moved and shifted to another account that had budget available in it to cover that, that expense. And so this practice of moving money and, and reclassifying transactions and transferring money from, between different budget categories, it obscures the financial transparency and the financial accountability. It doesn't give you as a board a clear picture of what is actually being spent in each of these budget categories. For, for example, we saw $16 million was transferred from a retirees' fund budget account to various different active payroll accounts. And, and that is obviously a violation and it puts at risk the ability to fund the retiree account in the future. And, and the purpose of that, it appeared, was to, to cover a shortfall or inability to fund certain payroll or, or other medical accounts, things of that nature. Specifically, we saw seven transactions that were class, that were misclassified under just other services. One of these was a large HVAC installation at, at one of the schools. I think it was 800, just over $800,000. Rather than being recorded under facilities or under HVAC, it was recorded as other expenditures or other services. And, and there were large payments to contractors and to various different service providers in these seven transactions, and those are detailed and outlined in your report, that should have been to medical services or to HVAC or to various other different things. But instead, they were classified as other, other services, or just this generic other services. And so as we found these things, what we did was we used that information for a targeted search of the email, to see was there specific direction given by anybody to, to skirt the system, right, to manipulate any information? And based on the emails, we only found one email that showed the former CFO advising somebody to, to split out a furniture purchase into two different, to two different POs. And the, the instruction said, you know, to, to avoid the $25,000, we need to split this out. However, we also saw a number of emails in which she was advising people, you can't do that because that's against the procurement policy. And so there were more emails where there was instruction to, to follow a policy and teaching and guidance and direction as to how to follow the policy, than there were instructions or directions to, to not, right? The only email that we saw to, to avoid the $25,000 was this one email. But what we did find was that this budgeting process, it really was siloed in the CFO's office. She did not get, and we couldn't see anything in emails or anything of that nature, where she was seeking input from department heads or from various different school-level individuals, you know, principals, things of that nature. And so it's, it appeared, based on all the documentation that we reviewed, as well as all the emails that we reviewed, that the budgeting process and the budgeting decisions were all made at and by the CF, at the CFO level and by the CFO with very little input from anybody else. And so that lack of transparency and that lack of collaboration really is what resulted in the, the overspending in certain areas. Because, and, and it resulted in retroactive budget adjustments that were then not submitted for approval. The, the budgets were just adjusted to cover various different shortfalls in other areas. And those approvals, I'm sorry, those retroactive adjustments did not appear to receive any formal approval, any formal board approval. On the procurement side, what we, what we saw from, from the documents that we reviewed and from the people that we interviewed and from, from just the process in general, was that the procurement process really kind of lacks visibility. There's, there's, there's decisions that are being made with, like I said, without input from department heads and from various different officials. It really, there was, there was a decision-maker that was making all those decisions. And so there was, there was a lack of visibility. Some of the information was actually not tracked in Munis. Student activity funds in, in particular, we saw were tracked outside of Munis, outside of the system. It was tracked just in, in an Excel spreadsheet that we saw. And it was not actually tracked in Munis. And the Facilities Department, they have a capital project schedule. But they have it. And really, no other departments actually saw these capital project schedules. And so there's, there's really a lack of transparency and lack of understanding and lack of communication as to what these capital projects are and how they are being scheduled and how they are being prioritized. That appeared to be just maintained by the Facilities Department outside of any, any systems. And then on the financial reporting side, we saw that there was some inconsistent training and understanding on the systems and the policies. And meaning that we would ask people, what is the, what's the travel policy? How do you receive reimbursements for travel? Do you travel? And we were told, well, I don't think there is a policy by one person. And then another person would tell us what they thought the policy was. And then we would go and we would look and there actually was a policy. And so there was a very clear lack of training on the policies that were in place. And on what procedures should be followed for, for various different financial transactions. We also noted that the journal entry procedures, procedures were not always followed. Meaning that you sometimes had the same person creating the journal entry and then posting that journal entry. And so that segregation of duties was, was not there in certain, in certain situations. It did not, the documentation was there and it was, for the transactions that we reviewed, the approvals were there. The documentation was there. It didn't appear that there was anything nefarious going on. But that, that policy, and I'm sorry, that procedure of segregation of having somebody create the journal entry and a different person posting the journal entry was not always happening. So as a result of what we saw, we had 34 different recommendations. And those recommendations fell into five categories. And the first was board oversight. Our recommendation is that there is increased transparency and accountability, that there's increased transparency for you all to, to see what's happening in the budget process, for you all to, to be informed of decisions that are being made, situations that are, that are coming up, that are, that are related to, to budget and to budget expenditures, particularly as it relates to any kind of budget adjustments. When there's a budget adjustment or a retroactive budget alignment, that needs to be reviewed and approved by the board. You all need to understand what's the purpose for this realignment? What's the purpose for this reallocation? Why are we doing it? It needs to be brought to your attention and then the board needs to approve that. We also recommended that there's an increased, or there's broader factors in school allocations. We noted that the schools, every school is allocated a certain amount per student. But some of the schools have, have different needs. Some of the schools have a higher percentage of special, special education, for example. And those schools probably should be allocated a, a different amount per student than others, than other schools do. It should not just be a straight across-the-board-per-student allocation. In the budgeting process, we recommend that department heads and others who, who have insight into the needs can have some input into the budget creation itself. They know what their needs are, they can submit a budget request. That doesn't mean that if they request a certain amount, that that's what's going to get approved. But there should be more insight into, or some more input from department heads as to what the budgets should be. We saw that that was the reason for some of these budget, retroactive budget adjustments and realignments, was because the CFO, when she was preparing the budget, didn't necessarily understand what facilities was going to need for that fiscal year. And so when facilities had a big purchase that they had to make, that hadn't been considered or budgeted for, because the CFO was unaware of what those needs were. And so if the department heads can have more of an input into that budgeting process, then the budgets are going to be more reflective of actual needs. We request separating the operating and the grant budgets in the systems. Those have different requirements, different reporting requirements. And therefore, they should be broken out and reported on separately. They should not be all reported on in the same report. And then there should be limits and documentation for and approval for budget adjustments. Like I said, those, any, any budget adjustments, any budget realignments after that budget is approved, any adjustments or realignments to that budget should come to the board for approval. And they should have a reason, right? They need to be limited to, they need to be justified and they need to have a reason and they need to be approved. We recommend avoiding vague account classifications. A other services account seems just to be kind of a catch-all account. And so if you do have something that's just other services, there should be a definition as to what actually falls in that account and what should be classified to that account. We recommend granting read-only Munis access to the department heads so that they can have access to look at budgets to actuals. And then they can make decisions, spending decisions and things based on real-time budget to actual data. And they can have more open communication with the CFO. And, and then that can be relayed to you all. And then we recommend centralizing purchasing and approval in Munis. There's a separate system for purchasing and approvals, it's called Fast Track. And so Fast Track contains the purchasing and approval documentation. And so you have to look at both of those two systems together to see what's going on. And so we recommend consolidating that all into Munis, so that everything is in one centralized accounting system. We recommend that all student activity funds be tracked in Munis, not in Excel. And that the facilities and maintenance share their capital project schedules across departments, so that those can be prioritized with input from all of the departments. And then we recommend annual training for all employees on the systems, on the policies, on the procedures, and fraud awareness training. And we recommend that that training be, that they sign off, that they have participated in that training and that those sign-offs and that those acknowledgements be maintained in their employee handbook or in their employee file. And then we recommend that, that the inventory procedures and employee record reviews is formalized. There's a general understanding of what it needs to be. But the, there is no formal procedure for inventory and employee records. So with that, we will open it up to general questions. I, I know we've gotten four, a few different questions. Do you want me to start with those that were emailed to us?
Yeah, you can start with those.
Okay. So let me pull them up. Okay. So who informed the audit team that the superintendent was contracted for 10 years? Was this statement based on documentation or communicated verbally? And actually, we got that from public records, we did a search. Yes.
Finish your, you can finish your thought, I'll follow.
Okay, so we, we did a search on that. And, and from our search and our, our research, we identified that, that there was a 10-year term. Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to correct that directly. Connecticut State statute limits superintendent's contracts to three years. Your research involved probably newspaper articles where the superintendent said she intended to stay for 10 years. But it's, we are limited by law to three-year contracts for the superintendents. They say we had a 10-year contract, you're saying we were in violation of the law? And this is a living document that's gonna be living on our website? And that we gotta live with and we gotta work with? So I would appreciate some re-research and correction of the records.
Okay, we can do that. The next question was the amphitheater contracts. The next que- question was the amphitheater contracts. Why were the two twenty-four nine-nine-nine amphitheater contracts not included in the documents? Were they not made available? Were they omitted for another reason? And um, no, they were reviewed. Um, we, like I said, did a risk-based sample. We didn't look at, at everything. And we saw that there were three contracts for the amphitheater and we selected one of the three to review. And the one of the three that we reviewed um had um a qualified purchase that was signed and approved. Um, it followed the policy. Um, and it had the appropriate signatures on there. It had the appropriate approvals on there. And it um, it had all of the documentation that was required per the purchase policy. Um, and then for the other two, we saw the contract as well. We just didn't include it in here because the risk-based sample was, like I said, not a hundred percent.
Yes, I just uh, on the, on the other matter that you spoke, I just wanted to clarify myself with that, when you, when you quoted that there's ex-superintendent had a ten-year contract, you based that on what information again?
Um, that was a, that was research that we performed. It was just a, a um, public search, public record search.
So you never looked at, you never, you called it a contract? And you never filed a contract? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. That was not in our scope to look at employee contracts, was not part of our scope. So it was.
So you were just hearing, like, like my colleague said, you were just basing it on news or articles that you read?
Correct. So we can correct that and, and take out the word contract.
Thank you. I miss the treatment.
Yeah.
Through the chair back. Yeah, I, I would um just, I find that a little odd that you refer to that as public record. Um. Just my own opinion, I, I, I never sort of viewed the news or the press as public record. Public record sort of gives me the impression of records kept by public entities.
What? Really, everything, everything that is available is public record. Um, and so all sources are considered public record.
If, given, given the breadth and scope of what's available on the public record by that definition these days, ooh, they have some hard times setting up. Um, that's why I find it hard. I, 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 I can sort of see it maybe twenty or thirty years ago, but these days. So I, I, I would have been fooled by that comment um as using that standard. So
Okay.
Not withstanding, not withstanding this particular piece of information.
Yep.
I just, that's public record. So.
And, and we hear you and we will, we will make that revision. We will change that um.
Yeah, but I just, I, I make this comment because that one's an easy one for me. Uh, notwithstanding what Joe said about the law, which is there, it's also just known that there was no tenure contract. Um, but uh, you know, um, uh, it just makes me worry about what else is in the public record that might not be right.
Well, nothing else is in public record. Everything else that we, that we reviewed. As I said, we looked at data. We looked at documents. We looked at what was in munis. We looked at contracts. We looked at um, that was just in our background paragraph there. That was not in our work performed paragraph.
And I, I have questions later, but I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You go to the next question.
Okay. How is the board expected to ensure compliance with MBR given we are not the direct funder is pursuing legal action recommended enforcement option? That is a question for your counsel. Um, that's a legal question and we are not lawyers. We are accountants. And so that would be a question that you would need to pose to your uh legal counsel.
You can continue.
Okay. From a governance and audit perspective, is it considered best practice to restrict the CFO from speaking directly to the board? And actually quite the opposite. It is best, best practice to have the CFO present to the board on regular intervals. Um, the recommendation and the best practice is to have the CFO provide uh whatever information you feel is the detail necessary for you to understand the um, um, contracts, budgets, budget breakdowns um to, to discuss budgets to actuals um and to present you with you know, visuals, things of that nature and be available to, to ask questions of. But it is definitely not best practice to restrict them from speaking to the board. It's, it's actually best practice to have them at board meetings. Um, is it good practice for board members to question and request documentation prior to meetings? Yes, it is. Um, it is best practice to uh request those, you know, probably about forty-eight hours in advance of your meetings, prior to your meetings. And that gives you an opportunity to review the information that the CFO plans to present. And then you can ask um for additional information and have them bring that and be present or be prepared to discuss that in your board meetings. And so you can request, um, you know, information on specific um contracts, on specific, you know, expenditures, budget, budget categories, things of that nature. Um, you know, a- areas that might be of a specific interest or concern to you. Um, but yes, it is, it is best practice to receive that documentation in advance of the meeting so that you can be prepared. You can ask your questions in advance and so that the person, the, the CFO coming in can also be prepared then to address those questions and, and concerns that you may have. Um, yep.
Yep. Was there, was another question there or?
There's, there's a few more.
I know.
Um, is it good practice for board members to, oh, sorry, that was that one. Um, is it ever appropriate to discuss financial data in executive session solely for the purpose of preventing public concern? And the answer to that is um that certain information obviously has privacy implications and privacy um as it relates to personnel matters to um, you know, any FOIA information, things of that nature. Obviously, it's okay to discuss those things in an executive session, but that should be disclosed prior as to why um the purpose of making, of having those discussions um in an executive setting and in a closed manner solely for the purpose of preventing public concern. That, that is dependent on whether those issues would violate FOIA or other privacy matters or concerns. Any additional questions you have about that, we would recommend that you uh reach out to your um attorney or your legal counsel. And then the last one, conflicts of interest. Um, I think um Dr. Hughes sent responses to those questions.
Yes. We do have a few board members here with some questions.
Yeah, I have two questions. Um, so you mentioned in your presentation that you took sixty high-risk transactions. And I wanted to know um in terms of a percentage, um in, in comparison to the overall record, what does that look like?
Um, it was fourteen million dollars total that we reviewed in those sixty transactions.
And from a percentage perspective, what does that look like? Is it like one percent, two percent?
Um, I don't know the exact percentage, Leah, do you?
No, I don't know the exact percentage. We went, I think by dollar amount, not by number of transactions. So it'd be, it would be a question of pers- what to, percent of what total you're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an exact percentage.
Um, and so a follow-up to that question. So let's say you found something that was an anomaly. It looked like potential fraud. Would you have increased the percentage or the dollar amount that you looked at?
Yes, we would have.
Did you have to do that in this case?
We did not.
So my last question is more so procedural type question. So within the report, there was references to special source. And I'm very familiar with sole, sole, sole source procurement. Not so much special source procurement. Is that common practice? Have you seen that in, in your field?
Um, I, I would have to go back and can you, can you?
I can speak to that a little bit, Emily.
Okay.
Special source is fairly common uh with any procurement area. It usually a lot of times refers to like an emergency situation, like a tree falls on a building and you need someone to come, come clean it up. So it's, it is very common practice, special source. It's a pretty common term.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, so uh let me start with where you just left off. Um, so we don't know, when you did this um selective random selection, I, I'm not, she's more versed than I am on this process. When you did this random selection, um it's sort of like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna look at different some transactions and see if we find anything. And if we find something that looks fishy, we'll look more. If I understand the process in laypersons.
Yes. Yes, and it wa- it was not, it was not.
Oh, we don't, we don't know the percentage that you looked at.
Right.
So.
Right. And it's, it's not, it's not a um random selection. As we said, it was a risk-based sample or a risk-based selection. And so based on, we, we looked at categories where um there were either hu- huge budget adjustments, right? Where, where we saw large transfers um or where we saw that um, um, budget to actual had, had large variations or large variances. And those were what we focused on, were those areas where there appeared to be um um, large adjustments or, or um, large variations in expenditures year over year. And then from those areas, we selected um higher dollar transactions to look at. And then we also looked at every um, we looked at every transaction, right, Leah, that were, that was right below the approval threshold? And then selected from there which ones we wanted to, to look at based on the contract information that we saw.
Correct, because that was brought up as a concern.
So we looked at right below the threshold. I'm sorry, let me, I'm just. And we looked at ones that there was a, a significant variance.
Yes. Or or a large um transfers, so accounts that had large transfers.
Okay, now I, I, I use that word random because I could have sworn last night. And, and now I, I, I do admit that my eyes were like drooping um that I saw random in the report. But um you still, when I'm heard Marissa's question, I understood. So how big a sample was this of the overall money slash budget slash process in those two, in that two-year period that we, that we looked at?
Like I said, we looked at, right, we looked at just over fourteen million, but as far as a percentage, we looked at dollars.
Was.
Right.
That was what Marissa's question was, right? How big is that sample? We don't know that.
Correct.
And, and I, I must say, this is all new to me, so I'm not trying to uh, but as a, as a, as a, as a P on or a commoner in this area, um I sort of think, okay, we're gonna finally, you, 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 by the way, I, I was struck and somewhat hurt. Uh, the, the background failed to mention that we had an RFP out for a forensic audit before the board, State Department of Ed Board ever asked to have you do this. Were you aware of that?
No.
Okay, we did. And I don't, don't know how our RFP compared to what you were asked to do by the state. And I was curious if you were aware of that and compared the two.
We were not.
Because we weren't asked then to sit down with you with the state to talk about what we wanted to look at in our, our, our desire to have a forensic audit done. And so now we're getting your report of what the state wanted you to look at. And it, it's sort of like now we're being told what the state asked you to look at and we're thinking, wow, okay. Well, this is very interesting and it is interesting. It's fascinating to look at. But it's like, boy, there's some other things we would have liked to see and look at. Um, and so now what else did we miss here? Um, and uh, part of that has to do with some of the questions you're getting from us. Um, when you say there were misclassifications of certain expenditures in your report, who misclassified them?
Um, they were mis- misclassified in the accounting system. So um, the, the uh accounting instruction and the, the documentation that was provided for reporting into the munis system had them misclassified for entry into the system.
So who did that?
Whoever approved them.
Right, so are we not trying to figure out how that happened?
So that was not, that was not within the scope of what we were doing. We were asked to look at what was the cause of the um difference between budget to actual. Um.
Definitely do policy work to make sure that we all have our side here. That's, that more comes back to us.
Okay, and then um in the results of the forensic audit on page six, we also talk about the identification of a lack of board oversight. Why was there a lack of board oversight in your opinion?
Um, I, from listening to the board meeting minutes, um, I think there was, there was not enough curiosity. Um, and, and you all weren't presented with the information that you needed, but it also was not necessarily requested in the level of detail that you would need to be able to understand exactly what was going on.
Did you notice board members were not allowed to ask questions? Were trying to ask questions?
Um, I'm not in those board minutes or those board meetings, and so I can only glean what I can glean from reading minutes.
And the minutes didn't reflect that board members were told that they were out of order and allowed, allowed to ask questions?
Out of order could be in a number of things, meaning the tone. I, I can't gain, I can't gather tone from reading, from reading uh minutes.
Okay, you said already.
I know. She wanted to finish her thought.
Okay, that, before she started talking, you and her.
And, and she, and she's.
I apologize. But I didn't catch because I was listening to the chair.
Yeah, so again, I, I cannot from reading minutes determine tone, determine the circumstances and the situations that were going on in that boardroom. Um, I can only read, read the questions and read uh the minutes of what happened in those meetings. Thank you.
Uh, okay, I, I'm, I'm just asking, so you, you not, did not see that board members were not allowed to ask questions
No, we.
At finance committee meetings?
No, we don't get transcripts. We get board meeting minutes. So we have minutes of notes, so we don't get an actual transcript of what happened. I don't know that there are transcripts of, of meeting minutes and if there were, they weren't provided to us. So we just get like the summary meeting minute notes.
I have to say how the business is. Our minutes are not advanced. And so summarizing. The minute, so that's why. Can I go learn by learning everything else then?
I know how good John's minutes are. Um.
It's not.
Next question, Kate, send of your report in the background. Um, I, I
Continue.
I am. I uh, I, I want to clarify, Mr. McQuill's here um, and the superintendent's here, so between the two of them, we should be able to clarify. I, I thought Ms. Siegel remained on the payroll as a consultant for many months after her apparent departure. And this would suggest that there was not that overlap. So I wanted to be clear on the record here as to what, it says the district is underground numerous leadership changes during the most recent years from January twelfth through March twenty-four. The district employed Marlene Siegel as the chief financial officer. At the time of Ms. Siegel's departure, Ms. uh Patricia St. Louis uh stepped as interim. And then Mr. McQuill, the former city budget director, was hired in September twenty-twenty-four. Um, and I believe that Ms. Siegel stayed on in some consulting capacity during that time. And it's not reflected here.
And that's because that is, that is reflecting who held the position. She was a consultant, not the super, or not the CFO.
Okay, and you don't think that it's germane in the background here to show that she still had a role in this?
Not if she was not the CFO. Not if she was not the CFO and in that employed position, making decisions.
Okay, and then let me just ask you then, I, I felt like this report was fixated on two things, which I saw that in the beginning, and again, I'm not, I saw in the beginning, and so I really want to be clear about this. One of the problems I'm having here is that this process, you said, as you said, you sat down with the State Department of Ed to discuss what they wanted you to do, and I get that. And there seems to be two fixations in this report when I read it. The Board of Ed and the CFO. And it seemed to completely ignore any other individuals that may have an influence on what happened here. And so, I, I, I guess I'm having trouble with knowing how things occurred during this time, the role of the superintendent and the role of the chair of the Board of Ed in what happened during this timeframe. So that's, I guess, what I'm having trouble with here, is those two factors not being spelled out. And I, I heard, I heard what you're saying, and so I'm not trying to give you, but as I read through this, I see that. You explain to me how you selected your samples. Yes.
Is there any indication that the superintendent was that person aware of, I don't know, I think it was you or her, of other CFO's transactions and, and moving around the money?
Like we said, this, it was all very siloed, and the CFO really kind of controlled the budget.
Hey, here we go.
I'm, we're just, or something.
This is something, oh, you're good.
Thank you.
Well, I, I know in the one initial conversation, the CFO stepped forward to defend the action of the superintendent after the fact. So that's why I'm concerned. So I don't not you, sorry. To be clear, to be clear, thank you for making that point, Ms. Siegel, in the file 23. The CFO at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes. On page 10, you did a now I'll come back to that, sorry. There's skipping, hold on. I'm not sure, I'll see and come back, I've got other questions.
Mrs. Calvert.
I'm working with her.
And we know we're here.
All right, yeah, first off, I would like to say, thank you for performing this audit. I do not disagree with any of the recommendations.
No.
I do say, I do have some disagreement with some of the things that were presented, but I don't think overall it affects the suggestions that the board has more oversight that have been. Now, the reason I'm trying to get all these clarifications or all these things, I'm the longest-serving member of the board. I've been attempting to get this audit since I sat in this seat first. Unfortunately, it took a crisis of makeup proportions to get to this point. And the reason it's important for us to correct the record right now is we have a lot of eyes on us right now, judging us and looking at us going forward, so I want to make sure we got a good path going forward. That being said, I'm gonna go, I got a couple of questions. I just want to clarify or to, so we have a date on that split purchase email, what date that came, what date that came?
That is one of your exhibits. And so the date is on the exhibit in the email, so let me see what exhibit that is.
Please, I don't get my little phone with me.
You have the exhibit number?
I'm, yeah, I'm looking for that right now. It is exhibit five. So the email is included in exhibit five. And it was dated February 18th, 2022.
Thank you, so. All right, thank you, that, that was, this is a question in my head. Interesting, um, I would just like to point out that, um, just, just for the record, that per student allocation for the school is just for discretionary spending. We do allocate more resources to higher need, higher need schools than lower need schools. Our special ed population is higher in some schools, they do get more resources than the other schools. The money you're referring to, I believe, is the $25 per student.
Forty-five dollars a student.
Forty-four, forty-five?
Forty-five.
Twenty-five per student, and that's a discretionary fund for the building principals to use as they see fit. So it's not every student getting the same amount. So we do distribute our resources on an equitable manner according to the needs of the building. That's important to be clear about. Another question about the grants and the operating budget. There are times where grants and operating budgets must overlap because we've got two positions where the operating budget will fund psychologists and social workers, and then we need more social workers and psychologists than the operating budget could absorb. So the grant budgets have to absorb some of those costs. So it's, it's not necessarily an overlap, it's just a dual source of paying for those services because we are starved as a district for funding. The chronic underfunding of the state, city, and federal government of our district has caused us to have to be creative. In a perfect world, we could have those little boxes. But the state has not created an equitable, perfect world for us to exist in without sacrificing the services. If we did, if we do as you ask and only put psychologists in the operating costs and say, oh, we out of money, sorry kids, you can't have your services, and there's those grant costs, those grants, if they're not spent, they revert to the state. So our kids lose out on those services, so there has to be some sort of back and forth on those budgets within reason.
It just needs to then be clearly documented, more clearly documented. And the approval needs to be retained.
And, and just for clarification purposes and reinforcement, that approval must come from the board?
Yes. Yes, line item transfers and any adjustments to a budget amount needs to come from the board.
Thank you, and, okay, what else? Yeah, I think that's all I got for now, thank you.
Yep.
Miss Gaspar will forget this one. Gaspar, do you have anything?
I did, but I was on the page, you can go with somebody.
Mr. Woodson?
Good question, did, did you say in the beginning that you didn't do any, any investigation on asset, asset funds?
As only as it related to expenditures exceeding budgeted amounts.
Finish filling out asset, asset. I'm sure it's a thing there, yeah. There was no, there was, there was there was no type of anything about, any, like inquiries regarding asset money that we, that we received, you know, we have like 140 something million.
If, if, if those funds were included in the operating budget and the expenditures exceeded the budgeted amounts, then yes, we looked at those and considered those.
I, I would have thought that, especially with, with all the money that everybody got and money, and the more money that we receive, that that would have been one of the first things, one of the main things that you, that you checked, you know. We, we had 140, went from 144 to nothing. And a lot of, and a lot of the towns, you know, I, you know, everybody had different needs and, and, and wants to do with the money, but I would have thought that there would have been some type of way, some, some type of investigation of how Bridgeport spent the money. Do you, do you think that Bridgeport spent their asset, did, did you, do you know what Bridgeport spent their asset money on?
It was included, yeah, it was included as part of the budget amount, so we know what the categories were for the total operating budget of 200 and something million dollars annually. And so we know how those, how those funds were budgeted, how they were broken down. As far as whether that was an appropriate budgeted amount, that wasn't, we, we were looking at, did expenditures align with budgets? Not were the budgeted amounts appropriate? That, that was outside of the scope of what we were asked to do. We were looking at whether expenditures aligned with budgets and whether they were used for approved, for the approved budgeted purpose.
Thank you.
On page 14, number three, it talks about a $175,610 payment to Shoreline Boiler for two boiler replacements at Maplewood School. I don't know of a Maplewood school. Oh, it's classical stuff, okay, all right, she answered it, thank you.
Okay, absolutely, that's, that's what the building, yeah. Adina, Miss Gaspar, you also?
Yeah.
Good evening, thank you for coming once again. I know my colleagues are like, instead, treat them like a peon, you can treat me like a little mustard seed, if you would. Because I do have faith in this process, but thank you for, and I have multiple questions that might be overlapping with theirs, but if you could just give me that quick answer, that'd be great. And I'll touch on, because Mr. Woodson mentioned that word, and you, a question that you mentioned a word, it was outside of our scope, and my question is, who established the audit guidelines? And what were they, and were they classified? And I want to first say, I apologize for my loudness, because I am Puerto Rican, but also, and I don't apologize for being that, but I'm loud, but I want, I didn't, I wasn't able to dive deep because of personal things and my job restrictions, as I wanted to, in these documents over 80 something pages. So who established the audit guidelines or what you use as a word scope?
The, our community, our initial meeting with the state. And it was outlined in the scope of work that was agreed to by them.
And is that in our documents, and just want to be sure that I'm able to go reflect back to them?
I, you would have to ask Mr. or Dr. Hughes if you could see the, the scope of work document, the contract.
Okay, so we gotta ask him for that scope of work. Madam Chair, you can do that for us? Thank you, um, thank you very much for that. Interviews, you mentioned about interviews that you took. Who set those, I think you said 10 interviews, if I, my notes serve me correct? Who chose those people to interview?
So we selected those individuals, we got an org chart. And we, from that org chart, saw who were, who were the, I guess, decision makers in each of the various different departments, and then who was in the day-to-day work and, and, you know, making some of those decisions. And so based on that, we identified who we wanted to select to interview. And then we, we redeemed the board meeting minutes and just kind of, you know, who participated in the board meeting minutes, who was in those board meeting minutes, and then we just randomly picked a couple of people to talk to.
Okay, in line with that same question, I think it would probably be appropriate at this moment, I'm just making my little checkmarks here that I know I talked to you about that. Because I heard you multiple times speak about policy and policy procedure and other stuff. And why, why didn't you speak to the policy chair? Or when you had questions about policies being right or wrong or bias, because I know that you mentioned that you were asking if there was a policy, somebody gave you an answer of no, but there actually was. So why didn't you seem at that point when you were having questions about policies and procedures? Why wouldn't you talk to the policy chair?
We, we were provided with the approved and printed policies and procedures of the district. Some of those were actually state-level policies, some of the procurement stuff is actually state-level policy, it's not district-level policy. And the purpose of the interviews was to understand whether people even knew what the policies were that they were supposed to be following. And in this case, what we found was people didn't even know what the policy was, which indicated that there was a lack of training. It was not an issue with the policy itself. It was an issue with people understanding and, and adhering to that policy because they were unaware of what the policies were.
I had that question because when, if I go back to our meeting later, your statement was that you asked somebody if there was a policy, but now you're saying that you did have it, you had all our policies with you.
Oh, sorry, we had the policies, we, yeah, we were asking individuals if they knew what the policy was. And they told us they didn't know what it was, and so our, our recommendation is that people need to be trained and, and acknowledge that they have seen and reviewed and understand the policies.
Got you, and I've been looking forward to making that policy India, that way it's in their contract or however we'll decide to do that. Because by the way, I am the active policy board chair, so that's why I had a question.
Okay.
Again, how, how did you, I, I noticed in this report, in the minimum that I was able to dive deep, that you spoke to board members, and in one of your reports or your slides, it was in there that you spoke to board members, but you didn't reflect on that, you actually passed by and went to the next page. So, you know, this board is selected nine-member board. And there are seven minorities in this board, but you didn't speak, I don't see nothing, record that you spoke to any of them. But you spoke to, as my colleagues that I spoke to prior to this meeting, you spoke to the two white males that are in this board. And again, I use that word because they use that word with me. And I'm just wondering why the rest of the board was not included in these discussions or interviews as board members? But only those two individuals.
Yeah, we just randomly selected it based on, you know, reading of, of minutes and people's names that were in the minutes that seemed to have the most, you know, questions and comments and things during the meetings.
Interesting, thank you. You mentioned that the only money that was being reviewed was a $14 million, kind of like bucket. And if I'm right, you said it was, this is two years?
Yes.
It's, so we're talking about almost excess of $600 million in his two-year budget, but it was only a $14 million bucket that was being looked at. And my colleague mentioned that, what is that percentage of what were you, where were you looking? And who's the one that pointed those specific, my question, who pointed out those specific 14 million compared to the 600-plus million probably in his two-year budget?
We identified those based on the data analytics and looking at where there were the highest variances, where were there, where there were the highest transfers, the highest adjustments, and where there was the highest risk.
You mentioned in the beginning that this was not a financial audit. I think that was the main highlighted in your statement in the beginning, that this was not a financial audit. But all over your presentation and everything, you're using the word financial, financial, financial. So who are in this? Let me pass that, you mentioned that you were provided board minutes. Who provided these board minutes to you?
We requested them
She said she was provided, provided, maybe somebody gave it to her. I think that word is means that. Go ahead, ma'am, sorry, she was.
You know, they, they were provided to us in our initial document request, I can't remember who, who actually provided them to us. But we submitted our request to the state, and then they forwarded that on to the respective individuals to, to get the documentation.
Do you have the dates of what minutes were presented to you? Or what range, if there was a range?
Jeez, I would have to go back and look, Leah, it was for, I mean, we got whatever board meeting minutes they sent to us from 23 and 24, I'm sorry, 24 and 25.
I can look at what the request was.
You said the word request is not, if you don't mind, who made that request?
We requested, we requested documentation from the state. The state then forwarded that on to the respective individuals to provide us that documentation on our request list. And all of our initial requests for these types of engagements include policies and procedures, org charts, board meeting minutes, if they exist, and financial statement data. policies and procedures, um, um, org charts, board meeting minutes, if they exist, and financial, uh, statement data. So we can be the analytics.
The request was for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Which is in line with the scope.
Hey, Mr. Vidia, that Chris came to my office, my staff collected the, the data. We had, uh, secured the portal, uh, that state provided us to upload all those documents into that portal for the auditing.
For clarity. No, great. I appreciate it. Thank you. So that was also included, uh, that one board, uh, regular meetings, also, uh, uh, excuse me, committee meetings?
I don't know exactly the request that was made. Okay, yes. So everything, every request that was made, we provided, that was line items. I checked everything off from my office as making sure they had every request made given to them, um, by the team.
And the request was for full board meetings and the meetings of any committees as well.
Thank you. You mentioned that there was sixty million dollars that kind of was flagged that went from every time, from the retirement fund to the active payroll account. Did you identify what year was that?
Um, it was in twenty-twenty-five. Sixteen, it's on page, um, eleven of your report.
Thank you very much. You also mentioned twice in two different occasions, and I just want clarity, even if superintendent of the board went, student activity funds. What is that kind of like? Meaning, or what does that reflect? I'm just thinking about fundraisers. That's the only thing that comes to mind. I'm the parent of three students and graduated in first four public schools, and they all did also, including my wife. So I'm just thinking about PAC and all that stuff. And what is that?
That's pretty much what it is. Student activity.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's pretty much what it is. Student activity funds raised by parents. Or student activities in the school.
What, what sports, like swatch ticket sales and stuff as well? Not, not sport tickets.
Not, not sport, okay. It depends on who is organizing it. Let me put it that way. For the school.
Okay. True, I didn't want to die too deep, I just want to find out because.
It's not this first money, it's funds being raised by.
The campus, okay. So I know you mentioned that you would like it to be going through munis and not through, you know, classified under Excel shit. You know, what would be the difference? I mean, I just wanted to find out, like, why was that a highlighted, uh, item out of, you know, a six hundred million dollar budget and only fourteen minutes being looked at, but also a student activity fund, which I don't think is, hey, high-dollar amount uh, within. So why was this highlighted?
Um, to show that there are things that are being tracked outside of the formal accounting process, and that, uh, limits transparency and accountability. Um, if it's recorded in a financial accounting system, then it enhances the transparency and the accountability of the use of those funds.
I appreciate that because I knew that was going to be the answer somewhat, because I want to ask you this question. Are you aware when munis began to be active within the First Board Board of Education?
So we did ask that. I would have to go back and look at my notes exactly what the date was, um, but I do know that you just transitioned to that a few years ago.
Not a few, I don't believe, but then we asked.
It may have been a couple of years ago.
I was the project manager from munis, the A R section, when it was implemented in two thousand and nine. What a dedication was part of the implementation. It's been with the board since two thousand and nine.
And it was never been, because I don't remember a board meeting that we had that was talked about that we are not using munis, but we should be using munis, so it was, I, I'm confused in that. That's why I brought it up, because I wanted to make sure they understood, but I guess that's not the case. Go ahead.
To Madam Chair, I'll be honest with everyone. What I've had seven units access that the city has. They chose not to maximize to use.
Hey, you bring yourself something, because I want to make sure we are understanding, because again, we want to know that when we can act, unless we know something, we can't act, and we can't help each other, and we can't help our district. So that's why those little questions mattered to me, because that was not what was expressed to me or what I understood. But now I'm seeing it a little bit better. I think he would like to interject some more.
To Madam Chair, if I may clarify, in accounting, you should not have a quasi-account. When I mean a quasi-account, account that does not the district has no control over, kind of, with a backup signatory authority and tracking record. Having these many accounts, student activity funds, in a private bank, in a bank whereby the coach or whoever has the discretionary approving authority is absolutely a no-no in accounting.
Okay. I agree.
So what I did the first time, she mentioned it in the report here. Two of those accounts have been put into munis. The two large ones, who put a month of chunk of money, that's the first thing I did. But I haven't gotten around the student activity. Many things to put in.
Well, we'll get to it. I believe, I believe that we will. Um. And you mentioned something specific that, uh, actually, since Mr., uh, Newboy is here and he, we were talking about this fast track. You mentioned something about fast track.
Form stack.
Huh?
Form stack.
Form stack. Can you share a little bit more about that? Because I know somebody was confused about it. I want to be sure I, I can. Well.
Again, I could give you the history of form stack, a little like from what I was told when I came out here. There's no reason for what a dedication to use of form stack. It's an intermediary accounting mechanism or requisition processing. It kind of doing work twice. First of all, the entry requisition in munis, end of the story, gets approved and it processes. They're using a media, form stack, manually entering it there. Then the business office will manually enter the same, excuse me, nonsense information in munis.
Yeah, baseball said, I hear you.
Fully redundant.
Yep.
So come October, we're gonna do a district-wide training for clericals for all the school. Everybody's moving back to munis. I tell you, every position in munis, it routes through the workflow, what they call workflow. Principal is gonna approve it, it's gonna route to me. Then I'm gonna look at the miss, what they categorize as misclassification, which is other services. It's a catch-all account. It's a lazy way of reporting accounting transaction. Here. Somebody doesn't want to look at the object code or the commodity code. They just choose other services. Just get it paid. I don't care where it belongs. It's a lousy way of reporting. You cannot run and not run a historical trend of how much you spent in construction. With one object code, I could, on the city side, with one object code, I can tell you how much we spent on paper. Because all official files are coded to, appropriately coded to paper. Here, catch it all, you can't really tell how much you spent in construction, remodeling, air conditioning system, because it's buried under other services. No distance.
So is that a timeline that has already been established? October of this year, everything's gonna move over to munis?
We have to do the training through all the clericals in the school. Go spend, oh, yeah.
Let me clarify. Okay, you know, as a school superintendent, we're, we're gonna take the thirty-four recommendations, guys. We're gonna, we're gonna follow and correct every single recommendation. We have a system in place that we're gonna review to make sure that every single thing that we do moving forward is going to rectify these, these, these thirty-four, you know, so, the issues that we're having in the district. A system wide, we do a lot of things manually in the district, guys, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna move towards a systematic way of checks and balances across the district. And, and because we're using munis and we're not using all the components of munis, what we're doing is taking a look at everything that munis offers public, you know, K twelve education, right? And right now the city side uses munis for the city municipal piece of it. They have a, they have a K twelve component. We're gonna look at those components. We're gonna integrate them into our current practice and be able to kind of, you know, put those things in place with training and oversight and transparency. Everything we're doing moving forward is gonna address this. Uh, and I feel very confident that once that's done, you know, in a few months, we're gonna be on the right track of moving and, and correcting everything that's been brought up this evening. Uh, it, it's, it's important that you guys know that we were, we were already thinking about this two years ago when I came into this district. We just hadn't got to it. Uh, this has given us the urgency to get it done, uh, and I can assure this board that it's going to get done. And it's gonna get done in a way that's gonna be manageable. Uh, we can't just throw everything at everybody because we have system issues, right? And we have to fix those systems in order to make sure the system is going to be fluid. So bear with us. This is a great opportunity for this district to really do what's important for the district to move forward. So I'm excited about that. I think my staff, we've already had preliminary conversations about the thirty-four recommendations. Uh, it's going to be, uh, uh, I think we're gonna be in a good opportunity to learn from our past mistakes and understand that we've paved the way for a positive, uh, traveling forward, uh, as we look at how we're gonna raise this district and the financial side of the house. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. How much, if we have not been u- utilizing munis for its full capability, and now we will be, is that gonna cost us anything or are we gonna piggyback off of the city?
We're gonna piggyback off the city. There's gonna be, there's gonna be some, some PDP things that we're gonna have to bring in to, to help out. But that's also what I'm gonna be asking the state of Connecticut to support us in that, in that, in that, in that way to be able to make sure we get this done right. Okay, so that's, that's something that, you know, I haven't had this time to discuss with the board yet, but that's part of our conversation moving forward, uh, in the different committees. We'll bring those things up and how we're gonna do it. I gotta, I gotta get remuneration to kind of get a, a timeframe of, so when we're going to get things done uh, that's manageable for all the other things that we're doing across the district as well. So, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, um, so I still have the floor. I have one small question, but I also want to say that I know our superintendent, uh, Dr. Avery is falling ashore. He wasn't making these mistakes and he's correcting them. He inherited it, and I appreciate that he is saying this is my baby now, and I'm taking the ship, and I'm gonna fix this. So it wasn't his mistakes, and I want to be sure I put that out in public, because I don't blame Dr. Avery, but he's taking accountability with others and, and for others' actions within the district as far as even the board. So I appreciate you, but you're, you know, can't hide you falling short by yourself. I have, this is why some of my questions are so like, hey, I have a statement that I would like to share with you, and this is why I was almost pulling my hair and I should see I bought, I don't, I shake my head. When you said only the fourteen million dollars would look at, guys, I, I was concerned because I have a document that came from the state that says there was over three hundred and four million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars from twenty twenty-four, twenty-five that was coming into education. And our budget that year was at three hundred and nine. And I was questioning that, where did all that money go? If we were receiving three hundred and four million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars through grants and funding and all these, E C S forum and all these things, which it came, that information and data came from the state and I can share with you if you want. And then we had a three hundred and nine million dollar budget that we set that year for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Where did all that three hundred and four million dollar go to? Where did it go? Did it come to our city or not, to our education fund or not? And no one was able to, uh, answer that question, even for the state people that was, was before me. You know, they just told me find out, because the money gets pushed through the city to come to us. And we got to find out where that money went to it. If, did it, did it all come into the Board of Education? So when you said that fourteen million was only the picture, I was like, wow. But I understand the facts are that you were not doing a true financial audit. So I guess that's why we wasn't looking at every single dollar it sent. Um, thank you, ladies. I'm sorry I took a lot of your time, but this was, uh, for me, time well spent. God bless you and thank you again.
Thank you.
There's one more board member who has to ask questions, then.
No, the question was being unclear, everything would be, so just keep forward.
Is there any final questions for the presenters that Dr. Gregory can't answer? Well, Mr. Chairman, this customer.
Um. Remember, I said I'm gonna come back. Um, so I, I, just to be clear, do you know why this model was chosen?
Do I know why what?
You said, when you said the, the beginning, you sat down with the state and they, y'all discussed the model they wanted you to do. Why was this model chosen?
That probably is about the state.
Well, no, they had discussions with the state. I just wonder.
We had discussions with the state as to what their objective was and how we would fulfill that objective.
So there was no discussion, because again, I, I'm just I understand the type of audit that you did, what it was, purpose was. I just wondered if there was any discussion about why this particular model was used. Um, on page eleven. Um. You, uh, in this discussion of this uh, sixteen million dollars, it says in the middle of the paragraph, although the specific details of these transfers were not examined in depth. Is that because of the model?
Yes, we had a limited budget, a limited timeframe, and we did a risk-based assessment. We didn't look at every dollar.
Which didn't involve going into depth on this item.
It went, it involved going into depth on the high-risk ones that involved expenditures that, um, have, that were potentially not for district use. Clearly, if it's being moved to, to payroll, it's being used for district use.
I got you. Okay.
May I interject on that question, Mr. Train? Sure. Give permission from the chair. Uh, what was, you mentioned a budget.
Yeah, you asked.
I did ask you, I did ask through the chair. I did. I did say. You're the one that called me out, so I'm.
But go ahead, you can speak now.
Thank you for your permission. Um, you mentioned that there was a budget for this audit. What was that budget?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you. And that was set by the state, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. To the chair, thank you.
Mr. Train.
Um. And I think that the, the last thing I would just say is, I do, as has been said by others, appreciate the work that you've done and the usefulness of recommendations. It's not, where we were trying to get to, but that's not through any fault of your own. That's through what you were asked to do. And it's going to be very useful to our planning in the future as to how our, the board is involved in the budgeting and the planning of, of what we spend and do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanna ask about other services, and that is very broad and vague. Um, what would be, I mean, I know when you have other services, you should try as best you can to add that money, whatever's going on with it, to align on.
Mm-hmm.
But but aren't, like, should there not be any other services category at all, you're saying? Or if you do have one, it should be limited to just a couple of things? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, if you have one, it should be limited and it should be defined or explained as to what those services are expected to be, particularly when you're budgeting for those services. Um, you just don't want to have some, like, catch-all category that you can use to put money there when you don't have it somewhere else. So it should be defined and, i- it should be defined and determined what those other services are and how that account should be used.
This is a silly example, like red clown noses for each and every single student in the district should go under student activities, for instance.
A- as long as those are related to a student activity, yeah, yeah. It should be aligned as, as closely as it can to an expenditure category and not just some miscellaneous other services category.
So I'm thinking.
Simple.
I just, I just need to clarify, the, the fifteen million, sixteen million dollars transfer from the internal service fund, from the retirement. Exactly from the internal service fund, which is a different fund. That is the amount of the same internal service fund that the board approved to use their approved accumulated software to balance the operating budget. That's what that transfer is all of. However, yes, the money was sitting in a different.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying, like, how else can you do it if?
If, if more ideal practical way to avoid all these block variants, you know, projected all your expenses, you align item expenses accurately. Then bringing the sixteen million dollars as a credit, worldwide credit under contingency, under contingency, that way you're not distorting the historical trend of what it's worth, which is to be or should have been. But when you start bringing in revenue. But when you start bringing in revenue from other funds, netting against the expense, then come next year. That money is not there to suppress those expenses. That's how you see these ten million dollars going in one liner. Historically correct. And it sounds like. The way it should, it should have been.
Yeah, I have a quick question for you, Mr. Nicole. Why is that account classified as retirees and, uh?
Because it's, because the savings of the surplus was accumulated on their the retirees' account in Fund Sixty-two, internal service fund. So I mean, is, okay, let me try it this way. They're taking it from the retired, budgeted retirees' account for current year. At the end of the, at the end of the year, all is going to do, they're gonna transfer money from the surplus fund to make that account full when they do the entrance.
Final question from Mr. Taliber.
Yeah, um, as far, as far as the scope of the audit, um, when you've done forensic audits on other school districts, did you do deeper dives than you did on ours or is this just like a, basically a surface glance?
It's based on the needs of the, the individual areas. We've done both.
Would you think it would be feasible for us to have a more extensive audit than was provided? If money was no object?
So are you, are you asking how much it would cost to do a full audit?
So, so we did have a full forensic audit.
I'll take that answer.
No, what I'm saying, forensic audit is very particular and does a deep dive. It seems like we've got an enhanced, some sort of.
If you're looking at, if, if you're asking what it would take to do a hundred percent looking at every penny, that would not be, that would not only not be feasible, but it would not be reasonable expenditure, um, to do.
Let's say, what, what would it cost to do like, say, if this is instead of a two percent sample size, a ten percent sample size and look at more things and provide feedback to improve our internal controls and such and find these weaknesses that exist within our system.
Well, they did say if there was an opportunity that if they found something glaring that they would have increased naturally the percentage of their sample size and they didn't find anything that would substantiate that. So if you increase it to ten percent, you would have probably found the same.
So that's, that's working within constraints of the budget. Is the, is this the usual sample size you use across all districts or is it a particular, particularly related to the scope and the funding of the?
It's, it's related to both the scope and the risk areas. And we looked at the highest risk areas and did a sample percentage there. And as has been explained, if we had found something in that sample, we would have expanded it within those risk areas. But we did focus on the high-risk areas and the high-risk transactions within those areas.
Thank you.
Any further questions? They could ask the state board for.
Emily and Lee, thank you very much for your recommendations. Uh, we're looking forward to kind of diving into them and providing the board with some direction as to how we're going to address them. So thank you again for your, your recommendations.
Thank you.
Provide us with this PowerPoint for our, our records too or?
Yes, who should I send that to?
Um, Danielle, um, she sent you the link for tonight. Okay, now I'll, I'll, I'll follow the emails.
Or me, either one. You have my email too.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it to you, Dr. Avery.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, moving on. I, I do ask that if somebody can make a motion before, uh, so that we can.
Make a motion to move number four, discussion of improvement of enhancing board operational efficiency through technology to number three.
Sorry, damn, I should have told you. Do you have the video? Um, all favor? Um, we're gonna start with the first, we're just gonna go over, uh, Board Book, which is a, a system that we're gonna be using. Um, that we've had in the district for a few years, I've been using. Um, and we're gonna have, with your approval, then I hope we start using it. We'll start with the video and then.
Managing board meetings can be complicated and time-consuming. You have to gather information, compile packets, update board members, conduct the meeting, and maybe even notify the public on top of that. This is stressful, especially when timelines are tight and you receive last-minute changes. That's why we created Board Book Premier. It is an all-in-one web-based meeting preparation program that helps you organize materials, communicate with attendees, run meetings smoothly, and document it all. Meeting managers love Board Book because it helps them maintain consistency from meeting to meeting with automatic formatting. Save time compiling recurring meetings with templates. Keep control of user access and delegating tasks. Stay organized by recording attendance, votes, and minutes. Attendees love how easy it is to participate in a meeting, even if they're not familiar with the program. For the past twenty years, we've been trusted by school districts, colleges, and other local governments across the country. If you're ready to find out how Board Book Premier can help, sign up for a commitment-free demo today at BoardBook.org.
All right, so, um, this has been, um, something that the district members had in, we already had some in the district, we haven't been using it. Uh, with, two months ago, when we renewed our cave contract, this was part of the renewal, um, uh, to use Board Book. It's basically like the video said, a way that we can, um, make our, our records, um, more transparent, easily accessible for the public, ourselves. Um, it's, it's a system that, um, Cave is recommending for our efficiency. Um, other system, other districts in Connecticut are using it as well, um, and, uh, yeah, so that's, it's just that they're behind in front of you, the what they do also. Um, and answer any questions with this point. But it's, it's kind of just a more efficient way of us getting our documentation or our paperwork in and, and seeing, being able to look at all the data we're getting.
Yeah, and through the chair, I think for, one of the things I keep hearing is that board, board members would like to have the documentation. Easily accessible to them, you know, when the, when the meeting is actually released to the public. Uh, and so this is a process that we should be able to streamline, getting everything together for the board when that meeting is released. Uh, and so again, it's, it's a, I think it's a really good opportunity for us to streamline the effectiveness of what we do and what we get for not only the board, but for my administrative staff. It gets, everything is done electronically. From their office desk, they can kind of upload the documents that they want to present to the board for review. All those different things, reports and things can also be electronically be sent. Uh, but what that's gonna mean is that board members are gonna have to be able to kind of get you know, up to speed on utilizing technology in order to be efficient in the work that we do across the board. So everybody, this whole district is getting ready to get mironized. You know, when it comes to systems and processes for, uh, you know, the fi- the financial piece, all those things that those thirty-four recommendations is telling us we need to do. We do everything, guys, manually in this district. And being a larger school district in Connecticut, we have to move away from that. We have to be efficient and we have to be, you know, steward of time, everybody's time. We're spending hours and hours and hours behind the scenes doing things repeatedly. And we still, we're not there. This is a great way to show the state of Connecticut that we are, we're trying to, to mironize what we do and how we do it, to be efficient about what we do. It's a great opportunity where Cave, when you guys go to your Cave trainings, you're gonna see other districts speak about how they're using the Board Book piece. Uh, it is just a wonderful opportunity to, uh, again, streamline processes. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to get the recommendation from the board to, um, dive into it. There's a lot of training involved with it as well. Danielle has been briefed as the board secretary to kind of work through that with you guys individually. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna slow step this together, uh, as we learn how to work this whole process.
Um, and, and the approval time we're seeking is just to begin implementing because we already paid for it, wanted to approve the Cave membership. So it's, it's not a matter of, uh, uh, it's a matter of whether we're gonna be able to pay for it at this point. So, Mr. Traver?
Yeah, so like, instead of the portal? That's what it's gonna work like?
And everything will be automatically, um, put in here, um, pu- published to the website. Um, where the, the public will have information ready to get it, which they should be having. So that's been a issue where our packets aren't posted for them, um, in due time, so.
And also the board members can see the board package being built. As, as, as my staff start putting documents into the portal, I mean, into the, the Board Book, you'll be able to see it being built until, you know, live. And Danielle releases it out to everybody or to the board members, uh, is when you'll get the full package together. It, it's, it automatically will track and update those board minutes and all the things that we're doing. It's all that whole process, all in one shebang. So it's a really good opportunity for us to, to move forward.
Yeah, um, basically the public and information, um, how are we going to ensure that we segregate any, uh, confidential executive session information that the board may need in ahead of time?
Well, you wanna speak to that, Danielle?
The confidential information is not gonna, we, we didn't release a P O at head of time anyways, that loses its exemptness.
Right, a- and, and that, and that's, that's a problem, is not getting the information ahead of time. Because confidential information regarding legal lawsuits and all that stuff, we need more than five minutes to read it, regarding higher.
I mean, and here, we're trying to do our due diligence, Joe, to address some of the concerns that you bring up every year. And I think that's something that we're trying to, you know, do, do our due diligence on. And so this will help, I think, help that a little bit. I'm not gonna say we're gonna be a hundred percent.
Well, because I believe it has a security factor also that prevents from forwarding or other, and sharing documents. So it's something we're gonna look deeper into and be able to provide those documents to you at that point in, as a executive session document, we'll, we'll, we'll get the legality of all that. It's a very secure portal and the really cool thing that it does too is it will take like the policies. And so when you have agenda items, it can link, you can kind of link them to what policy that is so that you, it will help you educate you guys better or, or not educate, but remind you guys better of what's, you, 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 of what policies are out there and stuff and, and how it relates. So you'll, I, I think you'll see it work better.
Are we, is Cave gonna be able to train us on this? Are we gonna try to maybe get them?
There's, there's a lot of online training that goes along with it, where you can do individual training, where you get, you watch the module, figure out how to get it done. Each one of us has our own little components and then Danielle's gonna spend some time with each one of you as well as needed in order to make sure that you're, 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 you're on point and making sure that you can utilize your portion of the, of, of the system.
So Cave has it all for us to just go in and like you said.
Board, Board Book has, has all the training, they have all these training modules. We can sign you guys up for the training with Board Book if you need. I'm kind of, I've done a ton of the training. There's different aspects of Board Book, different, um, or different levels. You're not gonna need the level where you're publishing to the website. You, you guys aren't gonna worry about publishing to the website. We can still run things in a sense both ways. We can start running Board Book and, you know, everybody getting their feet wet and still do the, the other way too. So until everybody's comfortable.
Yeah, absolutely.
How long has this been available to us that we haven't been using? I know you said you just renewed Cave and you haven't been using it, but how many renewals of Cave have we had that we had not renewed this? Like, how is this the first time?
This is the first in your own.
So this is the first year, so. Okay, all right, same deal.
Still involving legal questions of if Cave is using it, they're all covered.
Yes. And we, we had, we had.
It's worrying me. It's the transition and the, you know, of, of the systems and.
We're here to help you. I'm, I'm interested that I'm hearing are questions that we have, whether we're working this current system or we're working with a new system. And I'm just, assuming if this is a system that Cave has, uh, developed and is working using and with other boards that, you know, that, that stuff can be worked out. Uh, I think it's just a question of trying to make sure it works.
All right, so I'm comfortable with that, you know, being one of the troglodytes on the board, I'm, and that's a different problem.
Yeah, after time, Danielle.
Right. Quick question.
It's the, I just, it's concerned about, um, the old stuff in the, in the portal, let's say. Is that gonna be transferred into, uh, Board Book, all that information, all that data that we have as far as minister states?
So they're upgrading, they're, we're, we're working on the, the website. And we discussed that and my understanding is I would have to go backwards and create every single one of those meetings and to, to tie it to, so I'm not going backwards and recreating five hundred. Well, that.
We, we have to keep. Of the, of the older, you know, portal information, I think we're, we're, we're gonna be able to have an, an, an argument with technology on that.
That's just gonna be a link. I was working with, um, like me and Tim were discussing it, so that's already organized your board portal. It's gonna be a link to, we're gonna go through, clean out the board, board portal, make sure that there's, um, doc, that everything should be in there, the documents should be in there and just link that to the, as an archive section connection and then everything moving forward.
I'm gonna chair on a move to, um, to approve the enhancement of the board. Additionally, other questions, I'm sorry. I'm the most. I make sure this is okay. Uh, we're gonna make a motion, approval of enhancing the board operational efficiency through technology using, uh, Board Book.
Uh, move back, Mr. Dino, second by Mr. Bennett. Any further discussion, debate on that?
Yes. If we did have to go back, let's say, because like, like she said, can't expect to go back five hundred files or whatever. But what if we did need to go back to a meeting in two thousand and sixteen and look at the things?
There'll still be, uh, an archive section on the website.
Oh, gotcha.
So we'll be still accessed with that one. That's our legal provision.
You have to. You have to.
No, board packets too, yeah.
Aren't on the website, I'm sorry. Board packets are not on the website. This will be moving forward. Board packets are gonna be on the website. We can look, I mean, it's a lot of board packets that.
Yes.
We still, yes. And. Not gonna be like, poof, disappear.
We'll, we'll find, we'll, we'll make sure you guys have a pathway to, to access that information. I think it's an easy way. I, I just need to get with Jeff on that and I think we'll, we'll clarify for you guys on how to be able to do that and give you some steps on how to do that for you.
Thank you.
If they move the second, say, no clear, base on favor. Opposed. Nonsense. That passes. Um, the next item is the executive session for the evaluation of the interim superintendent, Dr. Roy Savy as a public officer employee of the first board for the education. Is there a motion to go into that session? Move on this to favor. Second by Mr. Bennett, you're all in favor. Opposed.
Okay.
We came up three out of the ten.
Everyone in the room?
We're back.
We'll profile it into a session.
Hold on.
Hold on.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we've come back from our executive session at seven forty four.
Um.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm Mr. Woodson. Everybody. Your favor, all in favor?
Uh.
And turning at seven forty four.
I see.
You know that.